Sam. Okay, everybody. I'd like to call to order the March 2015, 2020, the March 15th, 2023 board meeting and remind everyone to please mute your audio when not speaking, as well as state your name prior to making a comment or motion and second for an action item. I'll begin this evening by asking each commissioner to please respond to with a here when I call out your name. Commissioner Doan. Commissioner Doan, we still can't hear you. Can you hear me okay? We can't hear you.
Well, that's because my mic was muted. No, I got this really big screen. And it said, you have been denied, been denied access to the meeting. And so I texted Tom and said, you know what? I'm denied access. And I thought, but I have this card key that lets me in the door now. And uh, okay, I'm, I'm here.
Marvellous. We would never exclude you from anything.
Oh, I hope not. Thank you.
Never, never. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Doan. Commissioner Duggan.
Here.
And Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
And Commissioner Lysick?
Here.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. We'll begin this evening by reports from our chief executive officer and management staff. Mr. Hickman, sir.
Thank you, President Sanders. Commissioners, good evening. And welcome to almost spring. So we're getting there. All right. So I wanted to give you an update on my upcoming schedule. So next week, President Sanders and I will be traveling to Washington DC, March 22nd through March 24th. The purpose is to meet with legislators and regulatory organizations to advocate for some funding for TVWD. In my absence, CEO Pete Boone will be acting in capacity for me while I'm away. I will also be on vacation the week of April 3rd. And that one, I'm gonna be completely unavailable. I'll be on some rock cliff somewhere. So for that one, during my absence, I've asked our customer service manager, Andrew Kalstrom, to be our acting, my acting in capacity while I'm gone.
Is it, is it too soon to say bring enough water, Tom?
No, it's not. I actually, I actually told my partners that I'm going with that, hey, I am not going lean on water. I just wanted to know. We're carrying water. It's the desert. Okay. Future work sessions. So I, you'll see in tonight's presentation, you saw in last week's work session, there's a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes. And I just wanted to give you an update that we've been making a great deal of progress on, on these things there. It's a lot of the, I, I told Commissioner Doan earlier today, it's a lot of the ice that's below the water level. So that we're doing. So in the coming months, we will be using these work sessions to provide updates on things like our DEI initiative, the progress and status of AMI and that tied to our monthly billing. Updates on our compensation study and the finalizing of our mission, vision and values. So we, we're approaching the end on some of these. All of them are in some state of, of work. And it just want to let the commissioners know that it's been a very busy time these last few months. And we're, I don't, I don't know if staff sees it yet, but I certainly do. There is some daylight here coming. With, with these projects wrapping up, these are very foundational projects that we needed to get completed. And, and, and in particular, our mission, vision and values. That is what's going to be the foundation for our DEI initiative work to land on. That's, that's going to be the foundation for that. So, and, and a lot of these, like the AMI and the monthly study, the monthly billing, all of that goes hand in, hand in glove. So, all right. Unless there are any questions for me, I have no additional updates. And I'm going to turn this over to Andrew Kalstrom. And he can present the, the primary report this evening.
Thank you, Tom. All right. Well, good evening, President Sanders and Board of Commissioners. Tonight's department report is going to be pretty brief, but the title is CIS and related topics. Wanted to give you a few items on our meter to cash modernization journey. Here's the summary. So we continue our adaptation to the new CIS Open Smart Flex that continues, something we're calling normalization. We're establishing with Clean Water Services, what we're calling the Phase Two priorities. These projects are partnership decisions between the two agencies. We still have work to do on the new joint billing operational agreement. We are planning, planning is underway for the resumption of collections, including shut offs. And planning is also underway now for the initial monthly billing project. I think you know that the AMI design phase work is underway and AMI, that should be monthly billing, not joint billing, will be included in the proposed budget. So just a reminder on the CIS stabilization. The stabilization of a CIS solution after go live is where the utility adjusts the new processes, procedures and policies of the, of the new system. It's been a very intense time for staff. And as we support customers, as we go through the post-go-live world, the contractual stabilization was four months that ended in November. The operational, operational stabilization, what we learned from other utilities before we started this project was expect longer timelines. And that's why we're calling this the, the normalization, so that adaptation continues. The Phase Two projects, these are improvements that the TVWD and Clean Water Services will undertake following the core implementation. We are establishing those priorities together right now. That will include collections and monthly billing, but there are quite a few other items on that list. And just as a reminder for everyone, Clean Water Services and TVWD are partners in the new CIS. We're joint owners. And the priorities of these projects that impact the jointly owned CIS, as well as shared resources, must be agreed upon by both TVWD and Clean Water Services. And this is what we, I know you've seen this before, but I wanted to put it back on your radar. We had a three-phase, three-agreement approach for CIS. The first phase was the selection process. The second was the implementation and the third was ongoing operations. Our first IGA with Clean Water Services for CIS was in 2018. The second for implementation was authorized in 2020. We still have work to do on the final agreement. But both agencies have been joint billing for quite a long time, actually since 1994 by IGA. The, the current IGA for joint billing expires in two years with five-year renewals, but and while we still have two years until that expires, we want to get this done sooner than that. And finally, a few items, collections, monthly billing and AMI. As a reminder, shut offs were halted prior to the CIS go-live. We're currently planning resumptions of collections, including shut offs. Monthly billing, where we've started the planning for what we're calling the initial monthly billing project. Over the long term, monthly billing is really closely tied to getting that consumption data from, from AMI. And AMI, the design phase work is underway right now, including implementation costs. We'll get that, the consultant report next month. And again, we anticipate that AMI will be included in the proposed budget. And we'll have a more comprehensive update at a future board meeting. And that's what I have for tonight. If you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
All right, Andrew, I don't hear anyone speaking up for questions. So thank you very much for your presentation this evening.
Thank you.
And I guess now we are ready to move on to our next item, which will be our yes, Commissioner Communications, which are reports of meetings attended. And we will begin with Commissioner Doan.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, there's tonight's meeting. I had a meeting this morning with with Paul and Tom to cover the stuff that happened last Tuesday when my wife was having spine surgery. There was the RAC meeting and there was the work session earlier this month. And that's it.
Great. Glad to hear everything turned out okay, Commissioner Doan. Moving on then to Commissioner Duggan, please.
Ah, this month, I will report that I attended the RAC meeting number five. That was on the 21st of February. On the 2nd of March, there was a, a meeting of the WWSS Commission, where we had an executive session for property transactions. On the 7th was the board work session where we received financial budgeting options and our class and comp initiative. On the 13th, I attended with Commissioner Lysick, the Finance Committee meeting where we continued the budget strategies on the financial end. Also on the 13th, in the evening, I attended the City of Beaverton State of the City address by Mayor Lacy Beatty. On the 14th, yesterday, I had a meeting with Tom and Todd regarding our agenda planning for tonight and then tonight's meetings. That's it for March.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Duggan. How is that new research facility?
It is a stunning building. I, I, I am very impressed. Yeah, I, I, I had seen it a thousand times on paper and planned you in my former position with the City of Beaverton. But to actually see it now in, in, in finished form, it was amazing. It really is a, a, a nice venue.
Marvelous. Yeah, it looks beautiful from the outside. One of these days we'll be able to afford to go in. All right, Commissioner Fisher, please.
Evening all. Well, I also attended the RAC and our previous executive session. And then I was also supposed to go to the State of the City address the other night, but I got pulled into an informal meeting with some other Washington County residents with our Congresswoman, our new Congresswoman, Andrea Slinus. So that was really fun. And attending tonight's meeting, of course, and then tomorrow morning, I will again be with Congresswoman Andrea Slinus at the Westside Economic Alliance Forum.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. And Commissioner Lysick.
Good evening, everybody. All of my meetings have been covered. So the, the 3-7 board work session, the Finance Committee that Commissioner Duggan spoke to, and then this evening's board meeting and executive session. And I do want, just to recognize Paul and his team pulling together a lot of very valuable information between our work session, the Finance Committee meeting, and then tonight. Really appreciate the work that, that him and his team did and how quickly they communicated with us and look forward to the discussion this evening.
Yeah, they never fail to impress, do they?
Yeah, it's sort of a double-edged sword, though. You keep, you just keep raising those expectations and then we can ask for more and more detail than we might otherwise be deserving of.
This is true, but thank you for acknowledging them because I, we do greatly appreciate the work that Paul and his team do. For myself, it's certainly focused on the legislative side of things. I've met with Tom and CFM. Basically, weekly I meet with Tom on Mondays and then every other week we're including CFM. There's a bunch of intermediates, intermediary things that, you know, emails with CFM that I've just stopped, I guess, kind of paying attention to because they happen so often. But in addition to those meetings on the 21st and the 27th, the 28th, we had our Willamette River Water Coalition meeting with our water rights partners in the cities of Tiger, Toowallaton and Sherwood. Not a lot to report there, but more so in the future. Funding has been put into place to start to plan for certification of our water rights when, as we move forward into the future. So that was probably the big outcome of that meeting. You all mentioned the work session. And then Commissioner Duggan mentioned as well, the planning meeting for the agenda and then tonight's meeting. With that, then we will move into the next item, which is the topics to be raised by commissioners. And I will, I will comment on that first, just to let everybody know. You, you heard that Tom and I are heading to DC next week. The following week, we are going to be down in Salem, doing the same kind of similar. We'll be again communicating with the state legislators on our needs. But we were successful in getting some support from the Washington County Chamber of Commerce this week, we heard. And I wanted to take a second to thank Dave Kraska, who stepped in for us at the last minute and gave a presentation to the Policy Committee for Washington County Chamber. And as of early this week, they've agreed to sign off on a letter of support for us to send back down to the state legislature in support of our financial request to the, the state this year. So a lot of gratitude to Dave, to Tom, and then the folks at CFM for making it happen to set up the meetings with the Washington County Chamber of Commerce. So that was, that was really good news. Sure, I'll check to see if anybody else has any Commissioner communications they want. Otherwise, we can move to public comment. Yes, it is great news, Dave. And again, thank you because we threw that on your plate at the very last minute and you were able to meet that obligation. So we're thankful. Thanks, Dave. All right. Okay. Not hearing anything else, then. We will go to public comment. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. And I'm wondering, do we have any persons this evening who would like to comment? Not hearing any. We will move on to our agenda this evening. Beginning with item number one, our consent agenda, where our consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board members may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require discussion. This evening, we are asking for consent to approve the February 15th, 2023 regular meeting minutes and to approve the March 7th, 2023 work session minutes. Do I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved. Commissioner Duggan, so moved.
Keep Commissioner Duggan.
Commissioner Lysick, I second.
Commissioner Lysick, seconds. I think Commissioner Doan is trying, but he's still on mute.
I was trying to give him the opportunity for the second, but I.
We could see, we can see, we can see him saying it, but because we're remote.
Yeah. Maybe I am a lot. Anyway, I can't unmute my, my microphone. So, but this means yes, this means no. Okay?
Yes, sir. Understood. All right. So I'll ask our district recorder to provide the rule call vote, please.
Commissioner Doan? Thumbs up works. All right. Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lysick?
Yes.
And Commissioner Sanders?
Yes. Fantastic. The motion passes. Thank you, everybody, for your yes and thumbs up. The next item is our business agenda this evening. We will begin by consider the adoption of a resolution approving the 2023 through 2025 biennium strategic initiative and financial strategy for the Toowallaton Valley Water District. We'll begin this presentation with a staff report by Tom and Paul.
Well, good evening once again. And I, I am sufficiently caffeinated for this next part. So I, there's, there's a lot of repeat here that you saw last week, but we thought it was important for the public record to, to cover this material. So we're going to get started on this and feel free to interrupt if you have questions or comments. And then, of course, as always, at the end, we, we have the, the questions and answers and discussion period for all of you. So overview of the presentation tonight. So I'm going to cover the district strategic initiatives, what the carryover initiatives are and any of the new initiatives. I'll be discussing those. And then I'm going to hand it off to our CFO, Paul Matthews. And he's going to talk about the different scenarios. He'll, he'll cover again the scenarios we covered last week. And then also what we heard from last week to develop the modified approach that we will also be presenting tonight. So, all right. So again, sorry for the repeat on some of this. I, I will try to, to go quick, but I think it's important to cover that. Our concerns as a management team really haven't changed. They, they haven't changed since I've actually been the CEO. Because we've just been in this significant investment cycle on the WWSS. So one of the big risks that we face is future rate increases could be higher than we had planned, that we're seeing that now. And these are due to the inflationary things. We'll get into that in a, in a little bit. We're concerned the economy may go into recession. This is something we said years ago and we, we still don't know, but lots of things can happen with the economy that can impact things. And then our collection efforts, we are, as you heard from our Andrew Kalstrom, he was explaining that we are trying to get this back off the ground and going again. Where we're getting back to doing shut offs. But of course, before we get to shut offs, that's a last resort. We're trying to get customers to engage with us and get that effort up and running again so that we can get the amount of collections down. And then, of course, there's a lot of risk that remains with construction, mostly with the WWSS. There's a lot of construction in front of us and, and a lot of stuff can happen during construction. Our overall recommendation is that we continue to build financial capacity, that we, of course, manage our expenditures carefully, that we adopt rates that provide financial resources in advance. And again, that's a lot of what's being presented tonight. And then we also want to enhance the customer assistance program. The Rate Advisory Committee is got one more meeting next week where they're going to finalize their recommendation and then be bringing that back to the board here in April. But we've put money in the numbers you'll see tonight for what we believe they're going to be suggesting for the customer assistance program. And then, of course, as you heard from President Sanders, we're going to continue to pursue federal and state assistance. You know, the, you have to show up to get the money. And they, you gotta be present. And so we're going to continue to be knocking on doors and, and making rounds and then applying for anything that comes available that we can find. So what are the district's initiatives? And well, you can see across the top there, that's what the, the, the big broad category of human investment, intergovernmental relations, business intelligence, efficiency through modernization and current initiatives. So I'll start over on the human investment. So we want to make sure our employees are prepared to be successful in meeting the future district requirements. So that's in large part, making sure that as we take over fully operating the new WWSS, that our staff is well-equipped, trained to, to do that work. Intergovernmental relations. We continue to work with our partners in the region and in working to improve relationships. I would say that they have greatly improved. It doesn't mean we don't hit bumps, but they're much better than what they were just a few years ago. And then we obviously want to solidify that TVWD that we're, we're a necessary and desired regional resource, not seen as just an entity that you have to deal with. Business intelligence, we want to continue to improve planning of the district's ability to respond by developing actionable information from disparate sources of data. Quite simply, we got a lot of data cleanup to do. And there'll be more on that. And certainly, if you have questions about that, we have our IT Director, Tim Boland, on the call here tonight. Efficiency through modernization. We really need to look at where we can be more efficient by using modernization tools. The primary one you're going to hear about tonight is AMI. That's a, it's a significant modernization effort that actually then allows us to shift some staffing resources over to other high priority areas. And then certainly, last but not least, the current initiatives, we just simply can't fail on those things that we've already launched on. And that is primarily the WWSS. That is on a set of rails. We, we, it's fully contractually obligated to get completed. And Dave and his team are well down the tracks to making that happen. So, but that's certainly not the other, only one. You heard again from our customer service manager, Andrew Kalstrom, who said, we're, we're working on the CIS to get through normalization. So that's another one that's underway. And we continue to roll that forward. And we have to have that go through completion. And then at the very start of tonight's meeting, I mentioned a bunch of those, the ice under the water. All of those are current initiatives that we're trying to complete. The DEI, the comp study, all those things. So the strategic planning process. So the departments, they prepare, you know, a bottoms-up SWOT. What are they seeing from each department level? Then the leadership team develops what they see as, as the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And then we put those two together and take a look at them to help develop our focus. And, and then I propose the strategic initiatives. And what we're here tonight for is asking you to approve. And what we're here tonight for is asking you to approve those strategic initiatives. So a little bit about our SWOT analysis. I'm not going to go through each of these individually because there's just a lot of them here. I will hit on some highlights, though. So under strengths, I, I really, I can't say this enough. We have remarkable, excellent staff. They really are top of the game. And I, I just am very thankful and, and the amount of our customers that, I just got another one today, that come in and write in saying great things about our staff. That, that's worth a lot. I've worked at places where that wasn't true. And we get a lot of really good feedback from our customers that interact with our staff. I mentioned the partnerships. But I think one of the biggest strengths that we have, once we get to having the WILAMET operational, is having the capacity for regional infrastructure impact. So in other words, we can be a water provider to the larger region of Washington County. So it's a good spot for, for us to be in. It's a good strength. Weaknesses, we got a lot to do. You, you've seen a lot of it. You've heard a lot about it. There's a lot on our list. We are trying to get to a point where that list begins to taper down. So we're, we're getting close to where we can start to shift efforts as we finish up some of this other work that we'll be talking about here momentarily. You know, the, the other big one that I would hit there is the technology debt. Certainly, we spent the better part of a decade preparing to implement the WWSS. And in doing so, we've, we've, we've fallen behind on some of the technologies. So we're, we've got a bit of a debt there to cover. And so that's things like AMI, like the CIS that we've implemented, those kinds of things. And until those are up and running, we're still in a bit of a debt there. Opportunities, these are always good. And so staff development is a great opportunity for our staff that as we bring on the WWSS, it's, it's a higher skill set. So there's great opportunity there for our existing staff. And then this, we can continue to drive our, our leadership in the region. And I think we're doing so. We are, we're working, we're sponsoring actually here later this fall. One of communications platform that we're working with other utilities on and really being seen as a leader in, in that kind of the world within the utilities. But we're also trying to be seen as a leader in operations as well. And I would argue we are. We've been, we've been asked by a number of entities to fill in as a DRC where they're missing DR, DRCs. And that's direct, direct responsible charge for the system. I already mentioned our advocacy for state and federal funding. And really, the opportunity there is the dollars. And so it's not the advocacy. It's, it's hopefully bringing home dollars is, is the opportunity. And that, that's yet to, we'll see. So I do want to remind, you know, the, the board and certainly to any public that's listening that we have had some success. We have gotten $4 million from the federal government so far. Drop in the bucket compared to the scale of the project, 1.6 billion. But we are having some success and, and it's similar to the success some of the other partners in the region have had in their, in their requests. Threats, it looks like a long list, just simply because there are a lot of threats. So we just talked about workload already. We're trying to manage that. And hopefully, as we get further down the road sometime this fall, hopefully, we'll start to see a little bit of breathing room there. I believe we will. I'm going to do our best to those things that we have a gas pedal and a brake on, those initiatives and projects that we can choose to slow down on, we will. So that that can buy us some capacity, namely, the development of the strategic plan. That's one that we can, we can take a little longer if we need to. It's more important that we get it right than we, than to just simply get it done. We don't want to do check the box exercises. Cybersecurity always remains a threat. It's, we're, we're constantly under attack. So are all other entities. Our IT team has done a phenomenal job keeping our guard up and keeping us protected. But those folks that are behind these attacks, they continually up their game. And so we have to continually up our game and stay on top of that. And then the economic downturn, I mentioned before, is a big threat. And we're also very concerned about our customers' ability to pay. As you'll see, we have to do rate increases. We know that we have customers that this is a challenge for. We are trying to be proactive and develop a funding mechanism to help those customers that are in need. We're also trying to create opportunities for them by getting monthly billing to them before everybody else. So we're working on a number of fronts to help with that, but it still remains a, a threat. And then, of course, always the legal and regulatory environment. It's just one of those things. We just don't know where it's going to go. So. Onto what are we doing? Department activities. So again, I'll, I'll try to go through these quickly. In the Administrative Services Department, I mentioned early on tonight, the class comp study, the mission vision values, the DEI initiative, all of those are underway. We're, we're very excited. The timing's working out really well that as the mission vision values here is wrapping up, the DEI is taking off. And that work then can land on this foundation work that we've done with the, the mission and values. And then pursue governmental affairs initiative. So this is something we're doing. Working on, on a couple of different fronts here to, to cover that gap. And I, I really do appreciate how much President Sanders fills in at times on this role. And I appreciate his involvement on it, but we are trying to, to get it. So he, he's not the only go-to. So so, yeah, it, but it's, it's a lot of work. In the customer service department, we talked about the monthly billing. So you're going to hear more about this. You're going to get a full presentation on this on May 5th of our, how we're planning on getting, getting there. That'll also be tied with the AMI update and, and where we're at with that. And right now, we're hoping to have the monthly billing at least starting by August 1st. So, and again, we're targeting the communities that are in the highest need first to, to get monthly billing. Normalization of operations for this new CIS. Again, Andrew talked about that earlier tonight. We, we've talked about the reinstitution of the collection activities. We got a lot to do there. As you know, when we went to go live with CIS, it was recommended that we cease those collection activities to focus on CIS. We're, we're now at a point, we gotta get our attention back onto those collection activities. We are going to be updating our meter reading software just because the current software we have is outdated and no longer supported. So this is a bit of a Band-Aid to a longer-term solution that's tied to AMI. And lo and behold, the next one, plan and implement AMI. So a lot going on in customer service, engineering and ops. They are very busy over there as well. So we will be developing a new water system master plan here kicking off in this next budget. And they're also working on a new project management strategy. What that's really about is having our staff trained as, in a more formal way in project management. That's a really critical thing so that we can, you know, accurately measure and track our progress on these projects that we, we do in-house. And then asset management program. That is always ongoing. It, it's a, it's a never-ending story. I mentioned earlier today to Commissioner Don that if you, if you imagine a continuum of one to 10 for asset management, I would argue we're probably at about a six out of 10. So 10 being ideal, perfect. We're making progress. I'd like to see us get closer to the seven, eight range. So that's what we're pushing forward with. The coordination with the WWSP, our folks need to know how to operate this new system before it comes online. So a lot of effort is going on there with our ops team. And then, of course, the day-to-day operations and, and maintenance of our existing water system. Lot of miles of pipe in the ground, thousands of valves. All of that needs regular maintenance and oversight. So that's the normal day-to-day, and, and there's a lot. It's, it keeps them busy. And then, of course, getting our in-district CIP projects completed, and we have a few of those. Continuing with department activities, the finance department. Well, one of the reasons why we're here tonight is they need to issue a new revenue bond. So they need to, to get some information tonight from all of you so they can finish some of their work to get that revenue bond. And I, I gently kid about this, but managing rate and affordability is becoming a very high-wire act for us. And I, I always just imagine Paul, he's, he's out there on a rope that's getting thinner. So I'm trying to assure him I got a net underneath him. But anyways, but it, it's a tough act, and we continue to try to manage our, the rates and the affordability side of those rates. The finance department's going to be heavily involved in our strategic planning framework, which is the next step after we complete the mission and values work. And then we're going to be looking at modifying our finance department, our procurement process to support our DEI, DEI initiative. We're certainly within state law there, but we could do better. And we're going to look for those opportunities of where we can do better and, and then look to implement those into our process. Dave Craska with the Water Supply Program. He's got this thing on a set of rails, and he's doing his best to make sure those rails don't get bent. And he's on track right now to deliver the WWSS and the WIF capital projects by the, the summer of 2026. He, there's a lot of managing and commissioning of startup activities there as we get closer. And then leading the entire WWSS system integration efforts. So as we start going from our current sources of water to the WILAMET, it's a lot of effort there, and that ties heavily into the prepare for our operations plan. This is, right now, Dave and his team are eyeballs deep in this. And this is going to be a multi-year effort to get the operations plan complete. That's not something that's going to happen overnight. A lot of people involved with Hillsborough and us to, to get that document done. And then coordinating staffing, there's a number of staff that are currently dispatched to the entire WWSS program. And as that program winds down, those folks are going to be needing to come back. And Dave is coordinating with our staff here to do that. And then last but not least is our IT Services Department. They're looking, they are actively working on implementing the business intelligence initiative and helping us refresh our technologies. So trying to address that technology debt that we mentioned earlier. It's a never-ending expansion of cybersecurity program. Again, if you ever want to really get, you know, get your toe in the water on this one, it's pretty shocking to listen to the amount of work that it takes to stay on top of this and, and just the number of attacks that we see on a daily basis. And then, and then, of course, IT plays a big role in supporting our strategic business projects. So this is getting to where we have a really good dashboard of key performance indicators that we can, we can see and, and monitor on a regular basis. So this, everything I just said fits you in a tighter summary. So our current initiatives, I mentioned a few times. I won't go through each of those, but we have to complete those. These are not things that we can back off on, that we, we, we've got to continue to move forward. And we, we need them to land solidly. The new initiatives that we're talking about, that largely are the things that we have control over in this new budget and the, and in the financial strategy, is the monthly billing. That really isn't an option. That is something we've got to get done. We know it's a critical step to helping our customers that are in the, the toughest economic situations. That monthly billing is a, is a key step to helping them. AMI is directly tied to the monthly billing. So you, it's, you can't have one without the other. And then in case anyone isn't aware of, I, I get used to my acronyms here. So, but in case anyone isn't aware of AMI, it's the automated metering infrastructure for anyone that's, that's listening. And then lastly, our business intelligence. This is, as I mentioned earlier, it's integral to having a new strategic plan. If you have a strategic plan, we need the business intelligence to, that supports it. Otherwise, there's not a lot of point in having it. So we have to continue to move forward with that. So with that, that is what we are asking the board to adopt tonight, these strategic initiatives. And unless there's questions for me, I'm going to be turning this over to our CFO, Paul Matthews.
Well, here are no questions. Good evening, President Sanders and Commissioners. And first, I want to thank you for your kind words earlier about the effort the team went through. And on the call tonight, actually, is Joe Healy, and Joe is the person that has done all the heavy lifting. So I appreciate him joining us tonight, and you all probably know that. But, you know, we were also helped by all the departments and department managers and their teams in pulling together the information that we needed. So it really was a team effort, but Joe deserves special recognition. Our financial management process, and again, I'm covering this. We talked about this last week. But just to make sure that it's fully in the public record, it starts with the strategic initiatives and identifying those things that align the district's activities with what our customers needs. And that's what Tom just covered, giving us that to-do list over that next two, two-year period. As Tom mentioned, we are going to be developing a new strategic planning framework with the idea that that will extend further out in the future and be more comprehensive. But currently, this is our, our process. With that, then we develop financial strategies, which we're presenting to you tonight. Once we have those strategies in place, we're able to develop a budget through the budget process, which will work with the budget committee, which will be you as well. through the budget process, which will work with the Budget Committee, which will be you as well as five citizen members and present a proposed budget. Uh, once we're done with that, we'll actually come back and develop the full financial plan uh that will drive our rate process. So we're early in this uh process at the financial strategy phase and the strategic initiative phase. So the headwinds that we're facing right now, I think it's important that we put this out here so members of the public can understand some of the challenges that the district is facing and why our financial situation has changed over the past few years. Uh, one is, starting with Portland Water Bureau, next year, we're expecting our wholesale water increase to be twenty-six point one percent. That's based on a forecast uh we received from the city of Portland earlier uh this uh this went wrong February last month. So that's their estimate of what uh our increase will be in uh the water rate for water we purchase from Portland. In addition to that, we're expecting a rather large increase from the Joint Water Commission. Just like TVWD, these organizations are facing the same inflationary pressures uh that we're facing. And so although these numbers are high and and uh certainly we we don't like to see increases like that, we do understand uh the what's driving those. Uh, over the biennium, so over a two-year period, uh the cost for our existing staff, that includes uh healthcare, salaries and other benefits. Um, we're expecting to increase over that two-year period by thirteen point eight percent. So it's a little bit more than um the six point eight percent, I think, on a on an ongoing basis, on an annual basis. We've talked quite a bit about the pro- the uh project cost increase at the Water Supply Program. We're still absorbing that two-hundred million dollars into our financial strategy as well as six point three million dollars, which is an important part of integrating the Willamette into TVWD's system so we can continue to provide that level of quality water that we uh that we want. Last time we have on the list here is we're expecting about, over the biennium, so over the two-year period, about a twenty-five percent increase in the cost of uh pumping power that we get from uh our uh utility. And again, uh power costs are going up, energy costs are going up, and we have that into our forecast based on uh estimates that we've received from PGE. So we go out and do these analysis, these are the assumptions. Largely, these items we don't have control over. Uh, we have a contract relationship with Portland, we have our relationship with um the Joint Water Commission. Um, the PG rates are subject to PUC oversight, and those tariffs aren't something that we can control. But there are some items that we do have some control, and the financial strategies that we presented at the work session uh and the ones that we're contemplating tonight have these things. The Advanced Metering Infrastructure Project that uh Tom just talked about is one of those. We can have alternative phasing on that project uh to meet the uh financial strategies. On staffing, we are gonna have to add staff to bill up to have the capacity to manage the water supply system. Uh, but we can time that and we can hold vacancies, I have fewer additions and do that over time. Those things can vary among the financial strategies. And then the last one, as Tom mentioned, um as our cost of water is going up, we do have a customer assistance program that we are putting into the budget. It's an enhancement over the current customer assistance program, and that's what our Rate Advisory Committee or our so-called RAC is helping us do. Uh, but we can have more or less assistance and size the program accordingly. So based on that, when we presented at the work session last week, we presented three strategies. Uh, the first strategy we described as the advancing strategy, and that provided the resources and service levels that the district would otherwise pursue if we weren't seeing the tough economic times that we're having and uh needing to complete all the work that we have on the water supply system. The strategy two, the maintaining, that strategy is is sort of the Goldilocks in the middle strategy. It provides the resources that we need to complete the water supply systems Tom described on the rails towards completion. Uh, monthly billing allows us to phase that in, starting with our most vulnerable customers first and then building out. Phasing in the AMI uh coordinating that with the monthly billing, as Tom indicated. And it maintains the uh existing service levels, so that's the goal of of that strategy two. And then the third strategy, if the board were interested, was the most affordable strategy in the near term. Maybe not in the long term, but the near term. It would fund the completion of the water supply system, monthly billing and a partial AMI, but it would impact service levels. Based on our conversations with the, well, let me finish this. These were the projections that we showed you uh at the last work session. I don't need to spend too much time on that. We spent about more than an hour talking about them last week, and nothing in this slide has changed. Um, and in fact, the next slide is again a recap. For some reason, it won't seem to advance uh on the some of the debt parameters that we would have. So the top part, you see the total amount of bonds we would issue in millions of dollars. And in the bottom panel of this uh presentation, um are the one of the most important metrics to the district right now. Something described as our net leverage, which is how leveraged the district is in borrowing the money. In this case, a lower number is better, a higher number is is more of a problem. So we're trying to keep that number uh below eight in the long run, below seven, and uh try to get it down even below that as districts finances improve. So these were the three strategies that we presented to the board. Based on feedback we got from the board, we came back with two strategies that we presented to the uh Board's Finance Committee. Uh, the first is the maintaining strategy, which was a a the strategy that I just described. Uh, that would largely in uh have the rates following our current method, which is to try to avoid rate shocks as much as possible by having equal rate increases over time. You might notice that this year we don't have precisely equal overtime. And as we've gotten closer to the final funding of the water supply program, our flexibility to defer borrowing needs and rate increases is somewhat restricted. Uh, but that's that's the goal. And then, based on feedback we got, um we came up with what we're describing creatively as Strategy Two A, Modified Maintaining, uh maybe not the most creative naming uh uh strategy we've had, but neither that's it. The expenditures under Two A and Strategy Two are identical. So it truly is an apples-to-apples comparison. Uh, we are introducing higher rate increases in the first year, and that will reduce the the future financial risks and help us manage the overall capital cost of the utility. And I'll talk more about that here just in a moment. But if the financial risks that we're hedging against here don't materialize, eventually over time, the rate increases, future rate increases will bring Strategy Two A down to be essentially comparable to Strategy Two. So presented here are the customer impacts of the current proposal. On the top half, you see the percentage rate increases. First Strategy Two is just as we presented last week, with a nineteen point two-five percent increase in twenty twenty-four. That would become effective November first of twenty twenty-three. So we're talking about fiscal year twenty-four, which starts July one and goes through June thirty. But that rate increase will be effective November first, twenty twenty-three. And with a subsequent rate increase of seventeen and a half percent in fiscal year twenty-five, which will be effective in November one of twenty twenty-four. Uh, the Strategy Two A would have a higher increase of twenty-two percent in the first year and keep the rest of the rate increases the same. The panel below on the slide shows you what the impact will be on the typical um residential customers. So our typical residential customer has consumption of seven CCF with a five-eighths by three-quarter inch meter. The current charge right now is uh seven dollars and forty-six cents for that su- level of service. And you can see what those future typical bills would be for those customers. The the main difference, we are talking about increasing the rates and the revenue, but not increasing the expenditures. So what this does is it builds more financial capacity for the district and accumulates some reserves over time. What's presented here in the gray bars are the the reserves that we would build under the Strategy Two. The blue bars are the reserves that we would build under Strategy Two A. So over this period of time, that would generate about ten million dollars of additional financial resources. So we don't intend to spend it, but should something happen, all the estimates that we have, if they're wrong, if if uh our power costs are higher than expected or a Portland cost in future years higher than expected or any of these other factors, we would have more financial capacity to deal with those changed events. Presented here are the impacts on the finance, and I mentioned that one of the goals of Strategy Two A is to uh improve the district's financial capacity, manage your overall cost of capital. We're in a borrowing mode as we build out this generational uh project at the water supply program. Debt is critically important right now. We want to get the best interest rates we can. This will help us do that. Uh, so this would bring our our net leverage down below eight percent by twenty, below eight X, eight times by twenty twenty-five. And we're confident that this improves our ability to explain to the uh finance community that our financial strategies is um is very effective at bringing that net leverage down. And it provides that narrative that TVWD is a safe place to invest your money. And we're hoping that will generate more competition for our bonds and bring down interest rates. So with that, um turn this back over to Tom to finish up, unless there are any questions that you have on the information that I've presented so far. Tom, I will turn it to you.
Okay, well, uh, going to a slide here you have seen before, maybe. If I can get there, it's not wanting to. There we go. Um. So uh we we can't, we cannot have a discussion around uh budgets, finance and and without this discussion of risk. Um, so uh our Donald Rumsfeld uh is, you know, we, as you can see here, um, the things we know, we feel very confident about. Um, it, as you move along, uh the Donald Rumsfeld scale here, uh it's the stuff on the right that makes us nervous. Um, the stuff that we we thought we knew, but it turns out we didn't. So um that's the stuff that really bites, uh and that's, we we've done our best to predict the future, use our crystal balls uh to figure this out. But uh there's still those things that can change on us that we just don't know. So uh what are we asking tonight? So we are asking the board to uh select uh one of the strategies for Exhibit B of the resolution. So we've provided a sample here so you can accept or select uh either two, uh Strategy Two, or Strategy Two A. Um, and then that will get included into uh the Exhibit B of the resolution. And so whichever one of those you pick, two or Two A, then we've given you uh a sample resolution here um to approve and adopt. So with that, that is all Paul and I have, and we get to turn this back over to you.
Great, thank you, Tom. Um, can you go back, if you're still in control? Will you go back to uh the original one, two and three? And the only reason I'm asking this is because Commissioner Doan was not part of that original discussion. And I think you had that discussion with him today. One more slide, I think. Yeah, that one right there. Um, there's Commissioner Doan with two thumbs up. Commissioner Doan, if you can turn on your mic and we can hear you, just wanted to get your thoughts on these.
I would, but I can't.
But you did.
Yeah, I can sign it, but oh, yes, okay. I'm sorry. Again, Windows is not operated and things are kind of dicey. I hope somebody can read lips.
We can hear you.
I'll text you, Todd.
We we can hear you, Jim.
Oh, can you?
Yes.
My mic says it's it's silenced. Oh, well, never mind.
Well, keep, we we'd like to get your opinion as we move forward. We know you didn't get a chance to talk about these three strategies initially. Just wanted if you wondered if you wanted to share any opinions on these three strategies. And as you know, uh, the the meeting that was last week, um, the suggestion from the other board members was that uh we look at a Strategy Two, Two A scenario. If that's okay with you.
This is Jim Doan. I have uh a desire for Strategy One, but I don't think I've got three votes for it.
Okay.
But I can live with Strategy Two A.
Very good.
Uh. Strategy one, I think, gets us where we need to go quicker, but Strategy Two will get us there eventually. Strategy three is off the table as far as I'm concerned.
Marvelous. Um, okay, thank you, Commissioner Doan. Uh, we'll open up the floor to anybody else who wants to comment. Um, Tom, you can move it. I think all the other board members have seen these slides, as you said. If you want to move forward to Two Two A, and we'll open up the uh floor for any discussion from any of the Commissioners uh before we make a motion.
Uh, this is Commissioner Duggan. I just have one, one brief comment, and I want to thank staff very much for uh thinking through all these uh various options and uh a- a- adjusting and putting forward Strategy Two A, um keeping that uh net uh leverage ratio below eight for uh except for one year. I think makes a lot of sense. Um, doesn't, isn't going to be a a selling point to anybody that that uh will will have uh a disagreement with our rate increase. But uh I think that that and and the other advantages Two A will mean that I'll I'll be supporting Two A. But again, thanks to staff for um uh doing a a an excellent job in uh putting these things together for our consideration.
Yes, Commissioner Lysick.
Uh, thank you. This is Commissioner Lysick. Um, I want to echo Commissioner Duggan's statement about uh the effort that staff went in not only pulling us together, but then doing an excellent job of communicating it to us and facilitating a very robust conversation uh during our work session. Uh, given the circumstances of the uh the last few years alone, but really looking out over the life of the WWSP, um, we're landing that ship and any ability that we have to cushion some of the future uncertainty now versus uh even more painful rate shock in the future uh is absolutely a prudent decision. Um, and I can appreciate how difficult some of the deferral decisions have been uh as far as uh investment in other parts of the district. There there absolutely have been too many deferred needs for me to quickly list. Uh, but that is sort of the the price of responsible financial stewardship uh balanced with uh district needs at this point in time. So that that's why I'll be supporting Two A also.
Commissioner Fisher.
Uh, I just want to say kudos to to staff for for doing this for us and giving us a a fleshed-out Two A. Uh, I I very much appreciate it, and to echo what everybody else says, kudos, thank you. Um, I'm also gonna be supporting Two A tonight.
Fantastic. Um, all right then, Tom, if you'd like to move us forward, and I'll I'll read here. And I believe, um, although I I as often share Commissioner Doan's opinion that, and as I said in our last meeting, um, tend towards uh option one, um, I will here vote for option Two A. So um I move we select Strategy Two A to be included as Exhibit B to Resolution Approving the Twenty Twenty-three Through Twenty Twenty-five Biennium Strategic Initiative and Financial Strategy for the Tualatin Valley Water District.
I think we need to mention that it's Resolution Four dash twenty-three.
Yep, and I was gonna continue with, I move the board adopt Resolution Four dash twenty-three, a resolution approving the Twenty Twenty-three Through Twenty Twenty-five Biennium Strategic Initiative and Financial Strategy for the Tualatin Valley Water District. Do I have a motion and a second?
This is Jim Doan. So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Doan.
Commissioner Fisher, I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Sam, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, you can. Commissioner Don.
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan.
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Lysick.
Yes.
And Commissioner Sanders.
Yes. Fantastic. Thank you, everybody. The motion passes. And as Donald Rumsfeld says, if you try to please everybody, somebody's not going to like it. All right. Uh, that being said, that is our final item for this evening's, um, monthly board meeting. I will, uh, gabble the meeting out. And this meeting is closed. Just to remind everybody, we still have executive session yet this evening. And why don't we give everybody a, a, a short break and we'll come back together. I've got 7:12 on my computer. Would, uh, 7:20 be okay for everyone? Is that okay? Are we allowed to do that, Sam? I know it's scheduled for much later, but we're done now. Can we have the meeting at say 7:20?
Yeah, that's fine. I am going to read, uh, our executive session script before we leave the regular sc- session, if that's okay with you.
Uh, I believe we read that just at the start of our executive session, Sam.
Oh, okay. Clark is on.
So when we go into executive session, then we will have you read that script, okay?
Yeah, we can do it at either time, but it's at the convention. We'll do it at the convening. Okay.
Okay, so we will, uh, I've got 7:12 now. If 7:20 is okay with everybody, we'll meet you on a different bat channel.
Yes, so we will, uh, end this meeting and then everybody that is on the invite list for the executive session, uh, I will see you in there at 7:20.
Great, thank you, Sam. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody. Have a nice night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, everyone. Night.